This is the first meeting that the Planning Commission has had in person in a very long time. I don't remember when we stopped, but this is the first one. So, welcome. Before we get to tonight's agenda, I had a couple things I wanted to mention. First, have all the commissioners, did you receive that email about the Planning Commission Training Course?
Yes.
No, no.
The planning commission?
Yeah, right, right. On June 12th?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't need to forward that to you. Second, the town and the commission has received a letter from the Rodden Real Attorney. That letter is being reviewed by the town's attorney. There's no action required on our part, but I will forward a copy of that to you, and when the town attorney responds, I'll forward that to you also. But at this point, there's no action required on our part. Let's see. Also, the, there is a zoning administrator's memo that was prepared to help us get ready to submit the immediate term zoning amendments we're going to propose. You may have seen that. That'll be part of the agenda for the June meeting, so it won't be on tonight's agenda, but it's there for you to review, look at, and consider. And, let's see, the next thing. Last June, I was elected chairman of the commission. According to the town code, the commission shall elect a chairman from one of the appointed members and create and fill such office as may be determined, and it's a one-year term with eligibility for reelection, so in June, you'll have the opportunity to select another chairman if you so choose. And lastly, we are working on immediate term amendments to the zoning code based on the comprehensive plan. I would expect that in July, if we get through the 61 pages of agenda that we have tonight, and in June, that we'll submit, we'll announce a public hearing to go over those zoning amendments. If we don't, then we'll just, if we don't make it to that point, we'll have to do it in August, or September, or next January, whenever. And finally, the comprehensive plan was approved by the town council. The plan is being put together with the town council's ordinance that approved the plan, and Sharon will be providing paper copies to all of us when that's completed and getting it posted on the town website as the final version. Currently, it shows the amended or updated version for consideration at public hearings. So, the final version will be on the website here soon, I think. So, with that, we have an agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have the minutes from the March 23rd Planning and Zoning Meeting, which was our last meeting. We did not have a meeting in April because two of us were absent, and we didn't have a quorum. So, the last minutes were March 23rd. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 23rd?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The fourth thing on the agenda is that the members of the public, having seen the agenda which was posted on the town website, if you care to make a comment about it, we'll allow you two minutes for comments. Anyone like to make a comment about tonight's agenda?
I am Valerie Bodine, 8307 Bayside Road, and I would like to speak on the request to move the dumpster from where it currently stands on the property on Bayside Road that was the old Mama Lucia's that's now becoming Baya. I disagree with this move because I live in the neighborhood. It's a non-conforming lot in a residential neighborhood. The reason the dumpster was put where it was is because it's the centroid of that lot, and so wherever you place it, you will then be disturbing the quality of life of whichever neighbor you put it closer to. And so, once again, I'd like to say that I disagree with the moving of the dumpster. I understand the rationale. I understand that it could be an eyesore of where it's currently located. However, it is a non-conforming lot in a residential neighborhood, and I have to emphasize residential. And so, wherever you move it, if you decide to move it at all, you will be disturbing somebody else's quality of life because it's non-conforming. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the next agenda item after any other public comments. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
I'm Yolanda Holmes at 8321 Bayside Road, next door to the restaurant, and I understand that agenda is coming later, but I'd like to talk on behalf of the residents, as this young lady had said before. I came here a few years ago when Mama Lucia's had put the dumpster where it is now. As she said, that this young lady said earlier, it is a residential area, and if it's a commercial store in a residential area, I think that they should keep all of their parcels, the trash containers, on the commercial part where it is. So, if they put it in the front, they need to put it in the front of their building. I have a survey clamp on the patio of that restaurant. I allowed the previous owners to use my land as a part of their front of their patio. They'd like to put it on the front by the fire hydrant, they may. If they want to keep it on the commercial part near where it is now, they may, but under no circumstances should they put it in a residential area. Why should I have to smell and be a part of a commercial organization when I have nothing to do with that? So, I have two problems with it. First is with my surveyed part on their patio in the front. The second one is because of trying to put a food disposal with a concrete parcel landing to be picked up twice a week. I don't want, I don't want that smelling in the back of my house. And we all follow the rules for the blue container for recyclable, and with the black container for the trash. So, I think that they should keep everything commercialized on their property, not in an open space where the property is owned by you all. It's a waste space.
Go.
You're welcome.
Hi, Renee Reisner. I'm at 4012 28th Street, and I'm actually like one of the newest residents here of Chesapeake Beach. It's less than 30 days, so I've had about 30 minutes to prepare for this, but the dumpster would actually be directly in my backyard, where I currently don't even have a fence, so I would have a clear line of sight to the dumpster with restaurant trash wafting into the property that I just purchased, which is a kind of new information, a little shocking to my property value as well. So, I disagree.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to comment? Mr. Donovan.
Good evening. I don't think I've ever met, I know I met Jan many moons ago now, but I don't think I've met any else, anyone else from the commission in person.
Yeah, could you go ahead and state your name and address?
Wes Donovan, Rodden Real, 4165 Mears Avenue. I just wanted to say a few things about Rhonda Tracy and her family. They are hard-working, good people, and I'm sure that the dumpster issue will get resolved one way or the other, and I wish them nothing but the best, and hopefully, this isn't the welcome to Chesapeake Beach that they get, you know, until they open. But I have no, I don't have a dog in the fight, but I think they'll be very good neighbors to everyone, so. But I just wanted to comment on the agenda. I just wanted to add that in there. Many of the proposed changes to the table of land uses being proposed in the agenda do not reflect an attempt to implement the comprehensive plan, but are instead imposing the personal preferences of certain commissioners. Some of the changes have no rational relationship to the amended land use classifications, and the proposals for changing long-permitted uses to conditional uses reflect a wholesome attack on the commercial districts, especially with respect to restaurants and hotels. You spent much of the last two years railing against housing in commercial districts. Now, without any support in your own comprehensive plan, you are proposing to regulate such details as the hours of operations, security card requirements, menu selections, and changing permitted uses that have literally been in place for generations to be subject to your whims as conditional uses. Planning and zoning is not a legislative body. These proposals are not an implementation of the amended comprehensive plan, but an attempt to further cripple fundamental property rights. The proposed number 14 with respect to motels, hotels, et cetera, is specifically targeting a single property, dividing up the zone in a way that enacts irrational and unenforceable spot zoning. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for those comments. The next item on the agenda is the BIA Coastal Kitchen and Wine Bar Site Plan Amendment, which let...
Jason. Jason Eggers, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. You're here to present the BIA proposal?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here on behalf of JRT Holdings and BIA Kitchen and Wine Bar for the proposed site plan revision for the relocation of the dumpster. I submitted a proposal in writing, but just to give you a synopsis of what we're looking to do, we're looking to move the dumpster from its current location to near the rear of the restaurant on the south corner of the site at the bend in C Street. This is somewhat similar to what was proposed back in 2017, and I do have a copy of the memorandum from November 1st, 2017, where this was recommended for approval with certain, you know, suggestions. And I believe that what we have submitted meets the criteria that was suggested upon back on that 2017 hearing. So, I believe there is, you know, precedent for what we are trying to do, and I think we have a, you know, good solution for, you know, eliminating or answering the concerns of the town and of the committee. The previous proposal had the dumpster at a, essentially a 90-degree angle from the alleyway, which would, I believe, is what arise the suggestions of infrastructure improvements to the alley to create, you know, a larger width to be able to turn, for the turning radius purposes. Our proposal actually moves the fence and angles the dumpster in a way such that the truck will not have to infringe on any neighboring properties or make, you know, such sharp of a turn to where they can easily access the dumpster and service it. Our route that is indicated on this site plan revision is also in conjunction with what was recommended back in 2017, where the dumpster, the truck is entering from the south and picking up and then exiting from the west, as opposed to what was recommended back then, to go, you know, the reverse way, which, you know, created a, you know, a very fine line between safely being able to pick up the trash and exit without infringing on any of the neighboring properties. I also have a letter from our proposed disposal company, who met us on site and did a test run of this, and they agree that this route can be done with, you know, no, you know, interference, as-is, without any improvements to the infrastructure, you know, or widening of the alleyway. Any questions?
Yes, any questions?
Chris is going to present.
Okay.
Oh, can I, can I ask one question before he goes? So, why is it that you don't want to keep it where it is on? Do you not hear me? Can you not hear me? Oh. I'm sorry. Why is it that you want to move the trash over to the other side? Why not keep it in its existing location?
There's a couple of concerns for us. The main one actually being the, having a dedicated delivery area for our vendors. We heard and found that the previous tenants were kind of double parking essentially on the, you know, in the middle of the kind of entryway to the restaurant, because there really isn't a good place to unload deliveries. We've installed and we've been approved to install a kitchen entrance, which is on the south side of the building, which was not there before. So, that entrance gives us a way to, you know, unload or, you know, take in deliveries. So, our plan with moving the dumpster basically converts what is existing as a dumpster site now to be a loading dock for deliveries to take place. So, it gives us a dedicated area for trucks to back, to back into safely, so they're not just double parked in the middle of the street causing traffic issues and, you know, safety concerns as well for patrons, you know, walking to and from and around the parking lot.
Can you show us where on this, on the drawing this loading dock is?
It's essentially exactly where the current dumpster pad is. We would just be using that area.
Will you show us where?
Yeah. Want me to walk up there?
Sure.
Okay.
So, essentially, right here, where the dumpster is, we would use that area for a dedicated loading dock for trucks back in, which keeps them from double parking in the street right here, which is what they're running through, you know, or in the other area in the lot. Sometimes I have heard... ...back up right here in the main road.
Why couldn't they do the loading dock there?
Where?
Well, in this vacant area back there, behind where the dumpster is currently, it's still in the center of the lot.
Different lot.
Well, it's the center, that's your property, right?
Yes.
So, it's still in the center. Just speculating.
Yeah, I don't know that we would use that space here. I'm not sure if that is feasible.
You moved the dumpster to there?
Back?
Yeah, 20 feet.
I think that would cause a lot of the same concerns that I think the neighbors are arising. I mean, it's the dumpster as-is, is closer to some neighbors than it would be if you moved it. I think it's just a matter of which, you know, neighbors are concerned with move. I mean, this house here is actually closer in proximity to where the dumpster's currently located than if you moved it.
Okay.
So, if we moved it, you know, that would be even closer.
Janet, so, the reason you're moving the dumpster is so that the truck will have an easier access? Is that...
Well, it gives us a dedicated place for, you know, we use a lot of local vendors and distributors, so, you know, we're talking on, you know, six, seven, eight deliveries a day sometimes. So, it's a high-traffic area and having a dedicated place for a truck to be able to park, to unload and deliver safely for, you know, them as well as, you know, the patrons. And I mean, obviously, we know it's a huge walking area. People are walking down to that water all the time, so it's a high-traffic area. So, I think, you know, that was one of our main concerns, is just trucks having to kind of essentially double park right there. That's not the only reason, but that was one of our concerns.
Well, if, but currently where it exists right now, the, your, the neighbors are not unhappy with that, correct?
Well, I couldn't speak to that, whether or not there...
I mean, there hasn't, there wasn't an issue.
I couldn't speak to whether or not there was an issue. We're not open yet.
Okay. So, I guess there's no other accommodation you could make without, except for moving the dumpster to the proposed dumpster location. There isn't, you know, a halfway between an area that you could still have your deliveries come safely and efficiently six to seven times a day without moving closer to the, to the residents.
I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that this is the only option. It was kind of a two-phase, you know, it accomplishes multiple things for us. It puts the, you know, like I said, we installed a new kitchen entrance on the south side of the building, which we were approved for, so this allows us to remove trash from the restaurant and take it to the dumpster, you know, kind of behind the scenes, you know, I should say. The entire thing is fenced in, so from a neighbor's perspective as well as a guest's perspective, we can take trash out without being in plain sight of the guest, which we can't do in its current location. So, there's, you know, there's multiple reasonings for it, but it's not simply that it's, you know, an eyesore for us, that there are safety concerns, and there's just logistic concerns for us about being able to, you know, operate in that area effectively and safely, you know, in its current position.
Thank you. Yes, I have a question. It's hard to see the detail on this, but could you move the dumpster further east? It wouldn't be any closer. As a matter of fact, it might be not as close to the residential areas and put it there. I can't see what's, what's right in that corner there.
You're referring to closer to the, to the water?
Yes.
Farther down from the parking lot?
Right, straight back, so that you wouldn't get any closer to the residents, and you could still have your...
I think parking has also been a little bit of an issue. I think we kind of revisited, visited that option, and I think we lose, you know, way more, significant more parking spaces than where it currently is, or where, obviously, we don't lose any with our proposed, you know, change. And we lose at least two spaces, if not three, doing it that, doing it that way to provide efficient, you know, sufficient turning radius for the dumpster to pull in and pick up. Not to mention, from a logistics standpoint, it's obviously significantly farther away for us to have to, you know, dump it.
You also mentioned that this was best of several ideas that you had for where that dumpster could go. Didn't you say that early? What other options?
I said it wasn't, I said it wasn't the only solution, but it's definitely our best foot forward per se. It's, you know, what we feel like would accommodate all of, you know, our needs, and also, it improves upon what was previously, you know, recommended back in 2017 by, I think, addressing the concerns that were, that were addressed back then. I think we, you know, touched on most of those, from the infrastructure to the turning radius and the route of the trucks themselves. I think moving it down to the end is, is, you know, feasible. It's just there's the parking concerns is what worries us, and we've already heard a lot of that, who, where are people going to park? So, keeping as much parking as possible is important for us.
And you said you're losing two spaces?
I believe we'd lose two spaces by putting the, you know, we would need a 10-foot by 10-foot pad. There's also this kind of, I believe, forest retention area down there in the corner, or some sort of waste, wastewater management. So, I don't know exactly. Yeah, it's hard to tell if that, we'd be able to put a concrete pad there anyway, any farther back than, than obviously the parking lot currently is, in which case, I believe we'd lose two spots.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jakubian?
Thank you. This site plan for what was then Mama Lucia's was approved in 2015, and then two years later, roughly in 2017, the owners appeared before the Planning Commission requesting to move the dumpster to roughly the same location as it is now. At the time, Public Works Director Jay Berry and I, as well as other staff, were involved, including the town engineer, but he and I went out to investigate the alley, the length. At the time, the alley was actually a little bit different in its arrangement. It has since been widened. At the time, it was, the expectation was that the Mama Lucia's would widen the alley entirely, not just to accommodate the turning radius, but also to accommodate the width that would be necessary to allow the dumpster, or the truck to travel north on C Street. And in retrospect, I cannot remember why it was that we ultimately recommended that it be okay to locate it in this location. That was something we put in the staff report. Of course, the staff report, the bigger part of the staff report was about the rearrangement of the parking on the site, which was the major part of the project that was approved by the Planning Commission. But at that hearing, or at the Planning Commission meeting back in 2017, the minutes showed that we did not recommend it. In fact, the Planning Commission heard our presentation, heard from the residents, and basically said, "We don't have enough information," and described, made it clear to the applicant that you've not provided the information that staff expected you to provide to address any concerns of the residents. So, they said, "We can't approve it," and the Planning Commission said, "We'd like you to consider other locations." That was the decision at that time. And, but the owner at the time never came back to the Planning Commission, never addressed it again, and so that's where we are today.
When you say the alley was widened, you're talking about alley that runs parallel to Route 261?
That's right, between 28th and, essentially, 28th and the, and the alley that... That's right, between 28th and, and essentially 28th and the, and the alley that it intersects with. So if you're on, um, 28th Street, make a left onto the alley or onto C Street, excuse me. It's essentially C Street. Then, then you can make a left onto the alley going back to Bayside Road. So it was actually C Street, um, that I'm referring to, not the alley.
Um, the town widened the road or widened the alley?
The, the owner of the lot, the intersection of that alley and C Street widened it. That's a condition for permit approval to build the house that's built at that location. Because we didn't have-
It wasn't, it wasn't widened for this purpose?
Correct, correct, it was not.
Um, in your, oh, let's see, a couple of things in your, your note. Uh, there is a privacy fence there now?
Correct.
That's been constructed since?
Yes.
And the, the alley has been, uh, uh, widened so that, uh, truck turning movements are, um, and it can accommodate truck traffic?
C Street can accommodate one-way traffic for a truck or any vehicle. But the Public Works Director does not believe, and he's not here to testify tonight unfortunately, that there is sufficient maneuverability, uh, within the paved surface of C Street to accommodate this. And we have no plans to demonstrate that what is out there in terms of infrastructure is adequate at all to accommodate this type of turning movements.
This alley is the property of the adjacent homeowners, right? Or is it C Street, as you describe it? Is that, uh, town property or private property?
It's town property up to, um, up almost to the, um, to where the end of the fence is, the corner of the fence. If you go a bit beyond that, it becomes the property of, um, the owner next to the restaurant. We heard from Yolanda Holmes tonight. Uh, I believe she is the owner in fee of that alley. And, um, so for instance, if a vehicle passed that fence and continued towards the restaurant, that vehicle would be off of town property, would be on private property. That was, uh, abandoned and, and allocated to, um, Ms. Holmes, the owner of that property at the time.
So, so the trucks going, picking up the trash from the dumpster would be have to drive on private property?
No, um, it, it would appear to me that they accommodate all their movements entirely within the public right-of-way.
Uh, in your note, it says, uh, it would need expanded paved surfaces. Those are now, uh, existing?
The, the, in order to back a vehicle onto a dumpster pad, some type of, uh, pavement would be necessary between the existing road edge and the private property. Uh, so some type of construction would be necessary to make that, make that work.
And that would be on, uh, restaurant property or on private property?
It would be on the town property and on the restaurant property. We believe that you'd have to essentially add more pavement within the town's right-of-way to accommodate the pull-off necessary to get to a dumpster pad. In other words, there's green space between, green space within the public right-of-way between the edge of the pa- of the C Street and the property line. So some type of act, construction, uh, laying of additional pavement would be necessary.
Didn't you say you did a test on-
Yeah, they did write a letter.
-the maneuver?
They just tested the, the route as described in this, you know. I, I, I understand what Chris is saying, and I do believe we might have to bridge the gap between the end of the, of the, you know, public, the, the town public right-of-way and the beginning of the, um, you know, ten-by-ten, uh, concrete path, dumpster path that we would be installing. That would, you know, need to be, you know, bridged somehow. But as far as the actual route is concerned of, you know, coming in, um, you know, through, through the south, picking up, the, the, the big, the biggest difference that I want to emphasize between what we're presenting and what was presented before is, again, we're angling the dumpster such to where the, the truck has, does not have to turn nearly the radius that was, you know, originally proposed at, with the other, um, you know, owners in 2017. So the turn radius is not nearly as substantial. Um, you know, they're, they're pulling in and picking up on an angle, slightly backing out, and then, um, you know, heading west towards, uh, Bayside Road.
Are they using their largest truck or their smallest truck?
They, they came on site with the truck that, that would be servicing our, our route.
Are there any other truck options?
Uh, I can't, can't speak on that, no.
Um.
It was the owner of the, the company. I do have the letter here stating that, um, they performed the route. You're welcome. Chris?
Just to finish, um, the staff has met again on this, and, uh, we're not here to recommend it. We actually think it would be adverse to the 20 property owners, without question. Quite apart from the fact that we feel we have less information now than we did five years ago when, um, Maria Lebrana was proposing it. At least we had a lot of detail. She didn't follow through to deliver the plans, but she had a lot of, uh, ideas about how the operation would happen. The vehicle would be no different than the vehicle emptying residents' trash and all these other things that she had proposed. So, uh, the, the, we should point out that there is a green space between C Street and the house that you see, and it looks like a little, uh, yard. That is a, a residential lot. It's not built on now. Someone mentioned this evening that the dumpster would be essentially located in her rear yard. I think she's referring to that lot, but wouldn't be in her rear yard. She could certainly put a fence up or something like that. I, it would certainly feel that way. And-
Who owns that lot?
I don't know.
The lot is currently for sale. I own the property next to it.
Okay, so the lot is for sale. So it's, I thought you were referring to that property because that clearly is a backyard relationship to the proposed dumpster.
Where specifically are you referring to on this lot?
Yep.
There's actually really good pictures online because it's on Ripken.
Better buy it, you better buy it. Right here?
Yeah, yours.
Who had the idea for the angling?
I'm sorry?
Who had the idea for the angling?
Thank you.
Angling of the dumpster? Um, I s- I spoke to the civil engineer that was on the property when it was initially built. And, um, they said they, if they had to go at this again, that that would, you know, be the, the correct way to, you know, go. And then I also, um, uh, sought advice from the, the disposal company. So, that's, you know, why we ended up angling it. Um, and just to clarify too, our plan was to, to angle the fence to be in proportion with the dumpster. So when you bring that fence in, it actually does enclose the dumpster from the property in question that said that it would be in plain view of their yard. It would just be a privacy fence at that point. It, it, it doesn't look like that currently, um, because of how they had designed the, uh, truck to pull in and how, where they had placed the gate. Um, and we would be moving that entire fence to where it, um, you know, that, that gate was on an, on the angle in line with the dumpster. And then the end of the, uh, fence was enclosing the dumpster from that, uh, south side.
Yeah, it's actually a smart solution.
Thank you.
If I understand, so you correctly, Chris, the town, uh, engineers, uh, town staff does not recommend, uh, moving the dumpster to the corner of this lot as proposed?
Yes, that's right. And, um, I, I fully anticipated that Jay Barry would have written a letter to us. I, we discussed it, but he unfortunately is in hospital. We had surgery today. So we don't have that with us today. However, um, for the reasons I mentioned, he's opposed to it, uh, from a impact standpoint.
Oh, it, you're, the town staff is opposed to it because of the location, not because of lack of sufficient information or details that you, uh, alluded to?
The, the-
I mean, if there were more detail, what details could change the staff's opinion?
They couldn't at this point.
That's my point. We have representative of the staff speaking for the staff.
Are they by the code allowed to move their dumpster anywhere they want?
It's not a, uh, there's no provision in code that, uh, is called into question here or it's a site plan issue. Uh, this is a matter for discretion on the part of the planning commission to make a determination about the site plan.
So if we are considering the site plan, what in the code would tell us to review the site plan because of the location of the dumpster?
Um, the reason you review site plans is to deal with the off-site impacts of development. Uh, and, uh, so you won't find a specific standard that says dumpsters should only be located where, uh, the following conditions can be achieved. Uh, for instance, there's, you won't find a specific standard relative to that particular condition. But the, the purposes of the site plan review are to make the best possible development possible, given its location.
When we review any site plan, do you consider any off-site impacts?
Well, you certainly should consider off-site impacts and mitigate, seek to mitigate them when possible. This is a particularly different, different type of project because this is a commercial use in a residential zone. So it's, uh, requires little additional sensitivity than you would if it were in a commercial zone.
Um, question? Chris or whoever, um, who, who built that privacy fence? Was that Mama Lucius?
Yes.
And was that the height that they were allowed to build to? Seems pretty high.
Yes.
Okay, so that was a permitted fence then? But they only built it like for one to, to keep people from seeing the water? I don't understand that.
They built it for the purposes of what we're here for today. It was for the, it was for the trash. It was for the dumpster.
Oh, they assumed they were going to move it?
They were anticipating.
In anticipation of moving it?
I mean, if I'm correct, there were, I mean, there was a gate in place, the fence is in place. It's, it's built to, under the, you know, pretense that they were going to be successful in moving the dumpster to where we're proposing it today.
Okay, so, all right.
The only reason I can, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so we have these site plan issues. This is a good warm-up for us. It's very important when it's our discretion that we are neutral. These circumstance. Consider what is best for the whole of Chesapeake Beach. Every time we review, we review a site plan and we have discretion, that's what we should be doing. I'll say it's final, this doesn't go to the town council. Town plan. We have people's residential quality, life at hand. We also have their commercial business. First and foremost, have to be fair to both parties, and we have to, you have to weigh for what's right for Chesapeake Beach. I see in this, and I did drive the site. Anywhere you put that dumpster is going to be there. Anywhere. But it is a commercial property that needs a dumpster. And that commercial property that was there when every single person who lives there now bought their house. I think that the applicant has come up with a solution that is best for the property. All things. A whole time he got his truck company out to try the route. Um, the dumpster is going to smell wherever it is. Start all over now.
This again. I have to move closer to my microphone? Yeah, because she couldn't hear you on the recording. Thank you. Okay, I'll just recap quickly. When we have discretion over a site plan, it's very important to make sure that we stay in a fair framework of mind. And so first and foremost, we're going to consider the whole of Chesapeake Beach. Is the solution or is the proposal good for the whole of Chesapeake Beach? And then you have to think about who it impacts, and you have to be fair to all parties and to Chesapeake Beach. Um, in this case, we have a dumpster that's going to be there regardless of where it is, and it's going to smell regardless of where it is. I think some people mentioned concern with the sound. You're going to hear it wherever it is. It's on a commercial property that was there when every single house in that neighborhood was built. And no matter where you put it, some resident will have to see the dumpster in some way. Um, and everyone will have to smell it in some way. And we don't, you know, we're not talking about not allowing the dumpster because this applicant has commercial rights to his property and it needs a dumpster. It's permitted. I think you came up with a good solution. I don't know why we would be unduly difficult about this situation. And I think it's good for the whole of Chesapeake Beach to have a family restaurant with ambiance, with the ability to, to load, to unload, to take trash away, um, and do all the things that a restaurant needs to do to provide a commercial amenity to Chesapeake Beach. And I, I don't see how moving the dumpster into that location in the corner of the property is any different than moving it in any other location in the property. And I think he gave it some, some thought. He spoke to engineers. He spoke to his loading company. I don't know why we would not approve this site plan. It, it just doesn't logically hold up. And I understand that residents don't want trash near them, but unfortunately, there is going to be trash near you. Now, there is a requirement that it has to be, um, contained on all sides. So you would need to shield that dumpster location from everybody. Um, another solution that I would consider, um, is some kind of roof because there's tall properties that probably don't want to look in on the dumpster. So I think there, there might be some other things that you could do. I'm sure you'd be a very good neighbor about it, um, to conceal the dumpster further. But I don't have a problem with approving this and, and allowing the dumpster in this location. But I don't have a problem with approving this and, and allowing the dumpster in this location. I did consult, you know, I did look for some code to reference, and there's not much. But I found something in. I'm on 290, where am I? I thought I was in 245, but I guess I'm in 290. The definition of an alley is for exactly that purpose. It's for transporting. I lost my place here. It's for transporting the goods. That's what an alley is for. I don't know why the town would have allocated it to a resident. But it seems like that was short-sighted because now if it is owned by that property, it makes it difficult for a commercial property.
Okay, we had one other person that wanted to speak. Would you? Could you, could you step forward so this is being recorded and?
Yolanda Holmes again. At 8321 Bayside Road. My easement property line, as I said before, Mama Lucius built it right on the easement. So anything that happens or I can hear is about four feet between my home on that side and the restaurant. It was supposed to be six feet on one side or four to six feet on one side or four to six feet on the other, as the previous Crooked Eye owner had. The reason why I asked for the, the privacy fence to Maria Lebrano, and I asked, requested that, is because the very end of that fence, that I wanted a privacy fence for me. I didn't want any stragglers walking around and getting drunk and coming up on my back porch, as some things have happened like that before. The fence at the very end was requested by me. But I did ask for a six-foot fence, not an eight-foot fence. The second thing is, at the very end of that, even though it has a gate, and this young lady cannot see the water. She's next door to me. She cannot see the water because it's eight feet now. And her porch looks straight at the fence. And then the people across the street from me in the restaurant cannot see the water. So Maria did not follow the code at that time. It was supposed to be a six-foot fence, not an eight-foot fence. I requested her to do a six-foot fence to keep the, the patrons away from my part. And as I said before, part of the street goes into my backyard. But the, the C Street property of mine goes behind her home. So if he puts those concrete parcel beside that end of the fence, that's on my property, about two or three inches. Again, I'm, you know, I don't mind the restaurant being here. I do like the patron and I can walk next door. But the end of that street, grassy part, is my property. The street is not mine, but the grassy part on the other side of the fence of my backyard. The people who previously owned my home owned that restaurant, Crooked Eye. So the house was separated so I can buy it. And that's why there's a problem with the fence and the property. All of that is relative. Even the gas pipes, when they were being employed to be put propane gas, had to go up under my house to get it from the, from the town hall to get to the propane gas to where it is, the two propane gas parts today. So I've done a lot of allowances to make something viable in Chesapeake Beach. But I think I'm being railroaded again. Because the grassy part where he wants to put it is still. And even the gates that open up into their propane gas is my property. The grassy part of it, on the street of C Street. So Maria did not do the six-foot fence. She did an eight-foot fence. So it blocked all the neighbors and they got upset. But she did not move the dumpster to the back of our home. So that's why it was dropped.
Ma'am.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Some of the other commissioners have had a chance?
Absolutely.
Sure. Commissioner Gringle?
I guess I'm not as neutral as Ms. Blackwelder here. I, I have lived near a dumpster and it's the most obnoxious thing I've ever done. I, the banging of just trying to put trash into the dumpster goes all day long. The beep, beep, beep of when the truck, the truck backs up. This, this house that's next, two doors down from you, Yolanda, the house that's on the south side of the alley, they have a brand-new baby. I mean, then the trash truck, three times a week, is going to go up that alley, try and get out onto 261, diesel fuel going into their house while they're waiting to get out. And, and meanwhile, three times a week, this dumpster is going down the 28th Street, going up C Street, going up the alley, beep, 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 coming back after it's, you know, picking up and dumping. And creating, you know, probably hazards of kids, you know, these are backyards. Kids run in those areas. And, you know, a lot of times you may not be able to see them if you're backing up and trying to negotiate a dumpster to maneuver it into the truck. I, I am very much against this. I think it is intrusive on those neighbors. I think this is a residential area. The, as much as I'm really excited about the, the restaurant coming in, I am, I'm really thrilled. I want you to be a good neighbor. And, and when you hear we've got these complaints from neighbors, and I don't even live in the neighborhood. I live, you know, down, I live up this way. But I drove that thing probably four or five times. I sat there for probably a good half an hour trying to figure it out and figure, understand what the logic was behind all this. And it doesn't make any sense to me at all to, to try and, and modify what was somewhat working. You know, as far as that, that dumpster being right next to the kitchen. Yes, your patrons might see it from above. So you put a roof or some kind of a, a thing to restrict the, the patrons from looking down. But I see no reason, okay, yeah, maybe you have a truck issue. But Mama Lucius had trucks emptying out there somehow. And yeah, you put a, a new door into the south side. But, you know, okay, great, you have another access out. I see no problem there. But I, I don't see any reason why we have to, you know, Yolanda, she says, has given up so much of her own, you know, valuable space and resource and property value. Putting up, I mean, I know you didn't do this, I know, but putting up an eight-foot-high fence? I'm sure we didn't approve an eight-foot-high fence there because now those neighbors don't even have their views. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of appalled with the whole, the whole situation. But to now move a smelly, rodent-filled dumpster right next to all these wonderful little families there and neighbors? No, we can't. I am totally against it. There you have it.
Do you know how much further it is away?
Commissioner Redkey?
It's considerable. I mean, if you sit and look there, it's a considerable distance from where they.
I am not in favor of it either. I would love, I, I want that restaurant to succeed. I am excited about it coming on. If there are other places, other ideas, other suggestions that can be looked at and worked that wouldn't impact so much, that I think should be done. So, and I don't see how the town of Chesapeake Beach in general is going to be negatively impacted by the decision not to approve this. I certainly understand why you want to. I mean, it just makes perfect sense to me. But it doesn't make sense in the people's sense of the neighborhood. And therefore, I, I don't think it's a good idea. I'd like to see other suggestions.
Commissioner Brol.
Ma'am, have you, since you've owned your property, there's always been a restaurant near you? Is that correct?
It was there and then they knocked it down when I first moved in. And the owners, you know, sold, sold the house to me in 2014, October. So Mama Lucius built, but they, it was not that close to my property line. And so when I requested the fence, the reason why Maria Lebrano could not approve, and I don't know if you know about this, was because the gates that open and close, where they like to have the truck move in, that's on my, that's on my lawn. My lawn is, goes all the way back to 14 feet. They have 7,000 square feet of property from the street to the back. And that fence was put there to, to remind Maria that I owned a part of C Street, that I have to mow past her house, which she's next door to me, but she cannot see now. And so, and neither can the neighbors across the street who've been there over 50 years. She's been there, I'm sure, 40 years. Her mother owned it before. I'm a newcomer. This is a newcomer. But I'm, I've been here almost 10 years. So I say that to say that even if that truck backs straight back, he'll be stepping onto my land. And that's why it was not specified. I own part of C Street because of the owners who owned Crooked Eye, who sold me the house next door.
I understand. Well.
Yeah, just to answer your question, there's been a restaurant at that location for many, many decades. Prior to Crooked Eye, there was.
Right.
Chaney's, I believe. So it's, but it is also a zoned residential and it's a non-conforming use in a residential neighborhood.
Well, I know, I, I live up in B Street. And the alley across from me, instead of being subdivided, I guess width-wise, it's subdivided down the center. So, you know, across three houses, three different people own it. And, you know, certainly it's.
We have to work together.
It's tight up there. And my experience has been, I've lost two mailboxes to construction. And I know the trucks, in good faith, try to, you know, navigate without coming on property. But that, it's, it depends on the truck driver. I mean, we've certainly seen the trash trucks go flying through Chesapeake Beach. And, you know, the next thing you know, they're on somebody's lawn. So I, I think, you know, certainly it's, it is impactful for you. And, and I, I absolutely want the restaurant to succeed. And I think, but I also think, you know, good neighbors make great neighborhoods. And, and I think that it kind of puts you off on a bad foot if all of a sudden we're going to move the dumpster and, and everybody, your, your neighbors are unhappy already. And I think that's going to influence people's participation. It's a small town and that's going to be like, that will go like wildfire through the town about how the dumpster was moved despite the neighbors' objections. And I, I think it's going to set a bad tone. But I hope, you know, there would be another accommodation and option. And I understand from your business sense, you, you know, you want, you want to bring that truck in and you want to, three times a week, you have to have it. And it's a necessary evil. I understand that. But, you know, I, I just think that it starts off badly with all your neighbors being distressed.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackwelder, you wanted to say something else?
Yes, I'm finding this very arbitrary. And I'm a little bit disappointed in Chris since knowing that we had this situation before. It would have been nice to have known for sure and to been able to see these property lines and these conflicts that are being brought up. We want our restaurants to be successful. So, so I would suggest that Chris provide us with the property lines. And we can determine the distance of the dumpster from the various residents. And we can get a staff report that outlines the issues that Chris describes and revisit this. Because I've heard many comments about the Mama Lucius. And, and one resounding comment is that if the dumpster was in a better location, it would have been more enjoyable to be there. And we all want to help our commercial properties. And I don't know that that dumpster is so much different in the location proposed and in the location that it is in now that it can necessarily justify saying no. So for me, I would like to revisit it. I don't appreciate not having the information since we've been through this twice. And I would expect more of Chris. Especially since we had so much discussion about non-conforming uses during comprehensive planning. I wish this wasn't an issue for our new restaurant.
Okay, well, we have spent a lot of time in previous meetings discussing the traffic impact on Chesapeake Beach of new residences and new developments. This appears to have a significant impact. Adding truck traffic down an alley certainly has similarities to me of adding more traffic on Route 260 or Route 261. So is, is there anything else you would like to add?
I, I would just like to emphasize that these are the same trucks that are picking up residential trash. They're not, you know, three times the size or they're, it's the same sack trucks that are picking up residential trash, you know, multiple times a week. So it's no different than, than what's already going on. And, you know, these issues exist. They already exist. I just want to make, you know, that, that clear. I'm sure they, in the position that it's in, it could cause some issues with neighboring homes. There's, you know, condos on one side. There's waterfront properties on the other side. There's residential properties behind the ones in question. So I think, you know, the fact that it's being changed is not presenting these problems. They, they're already there. You know, it is a necessary evil, as, as you pointed out. It's just part of the business. You know, we just feel like we've presented what would be the best solution all the way around, you know, for, for these issues.
Okay, well, thank you. I think, first of all, that we should decide this issue and not kick it down the road. The applicant has asked to move the dumpster to a corner of his property that the residents, adjacent residents oppose. So for the purpose of deciding this issue, of which, whatever way it goes, the applicant can always make another application or change, modify the proposal. But at this point, I will make a motion that we, and for the purposes of deciding this, that we approve the change that BIA has proposed. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? All in favor of approving the move of the dumpster? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. The dumpster change that has been requested is not approved. I would emphasize that the planning commission very much wants BIA to be a success. I regret that this particular proposal doesn't, doesn't pass the commission. But I'm sure that you will find a, a way to make it work with another proposal. So, thank you very much.
I just have a housekeeping.
A question?
Question, yeah. Reference.
Does every commercial site, I mean, does every commercial property require a site plan to determine?
I think that's a broad question because, uh, commercial property could be, uh, somebody, working out of somebody's garage, repairing clocks or, so it's, it's in a, I'd say the question is ambiguous and depends on the, uh, depends on the applicant. Okay. Moving along. Uh, we have continued discussion of zoning ordinance changes necessary to implement the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan 2021 for immediate term text amendments. Now, Chris, you have, uh, some things to go through, so if you want to. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, the first thing that I would propose going through is the table of permitted uses and picking up where the commission left off. And, uh, that is this table here that with the various colors on it, it's.
So, we are looking at this table, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's it. And go through the table until you get to use number seventeen and you'll see a, a yellow band across the top, sections for discussion at the April twenty-seventh meeting. Of course, we didn't have that meeting, so here we are on May twenty-fifth. And, um, we did skip ahead. I see that there's one use that was removed, number eighteen, uh, from the RV2 zone. But, so this is, um, this is where the, the Planning Commission left off. Remember, um, and for folks who may be watching, each, um, each cell in this table is, uh, either represents a conditional use, a permitted use, or a special exception use, or if it's blank, not permitted. And, uh, Cindy has suggested, I think at the last meetings, to use NP as not permitted. And, uh, it's perfectly acceptable. And I think it's a, uh, an idea we can do without Planning Commission change. I mean, it's just something, it's a conventional, convention that we might use to better indicate that, uh, we considered it and it's not permitted. So, uh, I don't know if the, the commissioners have, you've prepared any comments about the rest of these? These, we've had these for a couple of months now. Any changes to?
Did you want to go to number sixteen? Because we, we actually didn't do number sixteen. I know you went to seventeen, but if you can see number sixteen, we, it's in red. We didn't address sixteen.
Group home. All right, so would you like to address that?
Well, I would like to, um, if you, you all received my, my little cheat sheet here on group home, um, for two ninety-eleven. These are basically just cut and paste from other towns that have actually done the same kind of conditions for a group home. And I think they're fairly standard. Chris, um, all group homes must be licensed by the state of Maryland. No more than five residents excluding one staff shall be permitted. There must be twenty-four hour supervision at all times. Staff services are limited to supervision and assistance and do not involve intensive rehabilitation or drug therapy services. Facility must provide a minimum of one toilet and one shower for every four residents. Adequate parking for one staff and two guests or residents is provided on site. And only one group home, this is one that I added just to make sure that we knew what was going on in each zone. And only one group home per zoning district is permitted in the town of Chesapeake Beach. That was something that I just thought we might want to add to control the numbers if we can.
So this is a really, um, important discussion to have. And this topic alone could take up the entire Planning Commission hearing. A lot of these conditions, uh, are really not valid anymore. There are a lot of zoning codes in Maryland that are out of date. A group home, uh, is a family. It's no different than any other collection of people that live together in a household. Uh, so the federal and state law basically classify group homes as single family that you can't impose additional, uh, burdens on the disabled or anyone else who feels it necessary to live with another to have the benefits of, uh, that's shared by the community at large. So it's a
So you're saying that, uh, the state of Maryland has essentially eliminated, uh, the distinction of group home from residents?
Effectively. Um, now, the town is actually in some legal discussions now on a matter related to group homes. The attorneys are going back and forth on, and, uh, I don't know the, the sort of the lay of the land right now with respect to that. The question for, for the state, the, the position that the town has is that while a group home is in fact a, um, a family, it is different in a zoning standpoint. No one wants to, through the text of the zoning code, prohibit, uh, someone unreasonably from living within a, a house in a neighborhood. It's simply discriminatory. But there are potential impacts that extend beyond the house. There are subtle differences. So that if you had a, a, uh, service company coming frequently or if you had, um, if the people that live there were independent enough to have multiple cars and the parking, uh, would distribute all over the, the neighborhood or block access. So there is a, a, a need for a, an evaluation on a case-by-case basis. Uh, and, um, but, uh, there is, uh, it's incumbent upon us not to put up obstacles. In fact, the law requires us to grant a reasonable accommodation to a request to, uh, for a group home. So, but the onus is on the applicant to ask for a reasonable combination, accommodation. And that's kind of where things lie between the, the attorneys representing the group home company and the town. So in my experience with this and other jurisdictions.
Can you first define what you're calling a group home? I mean, can you distinguish from a residence?
Uh, yeah, you, you, you can distinguish it from the, from a residence. I mean, there's a definition, I believe, in the code for group home. But it's, it's essentially a, a collection of people who may be unrelated, who are living together to share expenses or sh, to provide, to, to accommodate, um, or to, to share.
So the definition is in the code?
Yes.
And, uh, the state of Maryland does or does not license group homes?
Uh, they do.
They do license group homes. So they make, they distinguish between residences and group homes. The state of Maryland does.
Yeah, in that respect. By, by license, they wouldn't license a single-family home, but they would license the, a group home.
And we are allowed to put conditions on a group home within our code.
Such as you're required to have a license. If you say you're a group home, prove it to us and operate under the terms of the state license.
Okay. So, um, I know you tried to make this just conditional, which would give you full discretion, um, to permit this.
Did I do that? How did, where did I do that?
Well, you didn't do it on this iteration, but it was, it was a C at some point, um, in something that you proposed. Uh, now it's SE again. And, and what I think might be appropriate is that we make it SC. And so that we can, can put that condition for the license on it. Um, there, St. Michael's has some other parameters such as how many per? You know, how many people can live in a group home? Because what happens with these group homes is you can get ten and twelve people in one home and, and people have a business about it. You can look it up and they'll say, this is how you run your group home business and.
But would not, not be part of the license? I mean, you could have a group home with twelve bedrooms and eight people living there. I, I mean, you know, it's, it's part of the, apparently the license application, which considers the proposed number of residents and the size of the property and, uh, other factors.
And a
Sure.
And, uh, and most municipalities do have a, a standard. Uh, typically it's around eight is the max.
How many?
And eight. And, um, and I've seen in the Attorney General decision on this matter that eight seems to be like, okay. Uh, you know, there is essentially a judgment call. It's certainly accommodating. However, if the, the house were particularly small, uh, or that there were other issues involved and the need, if four residents required onsite supervision to a degree that it made it more difficult for any other people to live there, then a, a lower number would be a reasonable, um, exercise of the police power. Let's see. So there is some judgment that has to take place there. I, I would say this to the Planning Commission and you, you decide what you want to do. This is something that we should proceed lightly with and carefully. And I wouldn't want the Planning Commission to make any determination about this, uh, until you heard from the town attorney or you make a judgment now, knowing that it'll be reviewed by the town attorney before the town council takes it up to, to approve it. Either way, I think this would benefit from the town attorney's review and, and your consultation with the
Do you have any, uh, idea how long, when we would get that review? Is, is it a current issue being, um, adjudicated?
There is a current issue. I don't know if it's being adjudicated, but it's being processed.
Processed.
Essentially, a group home opened up without permit approval and the, uh, owners apparently have refused to concede to the town's requests for review and permitting. And falling back on the position that we are no different than a single-family home as established in state and federal law. So it's an important, an interesting thing to be discussed, but it's, it's not been resolved yet, uh, as far as I know.
And this is, uh, the town council is aware of the issue?
I don't know. I would assume so, but I
I, I think it would be wise to let the town attorney deal with this and then we can look at what, uh, what he comes up with. Because we don't have all the information that we would need to, uh, to figure this out.
But could we make a resolution to get that figured out before we get more group homes that open up without permission in Chesapeake Beach?
Apparently, apparently we, we don't have a choice. These, uh, some people are establishing group homes without ever coming to the town or to the commission. And so, uh, and they're litigating as opposed to, uh, asking permission. So I, I'm not sure.
Well.
We can, we can bat our guns together for, uh, you know, next couple of hours, but the result is going to be apparently settled in court and not in this court.
Right. Chris, is there any, um, in your experience with group homes, if, uh, a municipality does have conditions on their group? St. Michael's has conditions and their conditions, they have four simple conditions. And then they, you know, they have some definitions. A, B, C, D. The state of Maryland licenses the facility. No more than five residents excluding resident staff shall be permitted. Staff services are limited to supervision and assistance and do not involve intensive rehabilitation and/or drug therapy services. The facility provides a minimum of one toilet and one bathtub or shower for every four residents. So I think that at least we'd have some protection if we made a special exception with conditions and made these four things that St. Michael's obviously is allowed to have in their code, the condition, and that will, um, protect us until we hear from the attorney.
I would venture to say that the town council will not implement anything until they hear from the town attorney. So we can propose whatever we like, but they're going to wait for the town attorney.
We might as well just go home because they're going to do that with everything.
If you want to go home, then we can call the meeting. It's a half hour early, but, uh, I mean, you know. So, uh, how many want to consider continued discussion of group homes?
Special exceptions with conditions.
Yes, right now.
I'm not sure, uh, she's asking about special, uh, exceptions with conditions. I'm not sure that we're qualified at this point to offer the conditions just because it sounds like it's
The town of St. Michael's isn't qualified?
Well, I mean, they may be out of date, just as, uh, Mr. Chukubiec said. I don't really want to pursue it if, uh, we're going to, you know, get a lot, into a lawsuit over it, um, as much as I would like to. But, um, you can see that I, you know, we're all this stuff now, but it's not going to do us any good. So I would just say we'll put a hold on that and just wait for further direction on that. Mr. Chukubiec, if you wouldn't mind keeping us sedate on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
And the question, uh, another question might be, we've, we're considering immediate term amendments necessary to implement the Comprehensive Plan and I'm not sure group homes really fall, falls into that category.
Chairman Brown?
Oh, I mean, we will, presumably we'll do the necessary things for the immediate concerns and then we will later consider other issues. But we want to get to the town council, something they can implement so that the moratorium can be lifted, um, as opposed to trying to address all the issues that we, um, might be concerned about in the town code, which will take a little longer, I suspect. Oh.
Chairman Brown?
Uh, Zai saw, is, who else? Is there, is there a quorum or is there a majority that want to continue discussing group homes?
Kathleen had a question. Kathleen had a question.
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask in the, if we hold this until the town attorney has an opportunity to review it, can we put some type of a, uh, a request just that it would be expeditious so that it doesn't, um, you know, the review doesn't take three, four months in our request?
The review will take as long as, uh, you've worked with attorneys, right?
I, and that's exactly why I want, that's why, yes, that's why I want the caveat that, um, we, sooner rather than later.
Okay, how about if I will, I will send a note to the town administrator telling her that we are interested in this issue and we would appreciate, uh, being informed as soon as the town
An opportunity.
Yep.
Sure. Thank you.
So with that, uh, we continue on to the next item, Chris, which I think was number eighteen?
Great.
Happened in seventeen. Oh.
Well, we had made it to eighteen at the last meeting. We can go back and redo all the rest of them. And there's only, what, forty-five to go?
Yeah, you know, my, um, just as, by a bit way of background, I haven't gone through every one of these uses to make any type of judgment about whether they seem to fit. What I did was to create another column for the RV2. So there's an RV1 and RV2 and then eliminate the commercial and add the four different commercial categories. And then, you know, and then the impacts to that are what you see here, all shaded. It's, to say that by way of preference, if this, if we were going through a full comprehensive rezoning and looking at all the changes, believe me, I'd have recommendations to update our group home standards and, and other things in the code as well. But, um, my, my intent is that we can achieve those things that you said as your priorities and get them to the mayor council because we have a moratorium that's pending. I mean, it's imposing, you know, is, is over and operating. And we need to address these things and get them to the town council so they can adopt the right regulatory codes. So, um, just by way of preference, and I, so you've seen, I'm just opening it up. If any other body else has any other further comments about this. other body else has any other further comments about this, and I, again, what I'm also saying is that I fully intend that the commission will go into a further, more detailed review of all these uses at some point, once this sort of more immediate term set of changes are approved.
But this is intermediate or long-term?
It's kind of, it's intermediate, it's essentially to get this code established so that you could regulate development in a way that implements the plan before it's too late. That's all, that's all this is.
As the, as the comprehensive plan said, there, we would provide immediate term text amendments, and then later we would go and recommend other.
So this is not, you're saying this is not immediate, or it is immediate?
It's immediate in the sense that it responds to the changes we've made. We've created new zoning categories, so this table of permitting to uses is naturally going to be changed. So it flows from that.
So if I could suggest that we have, all the commissioners have this list, we can look through it at our leisure, and see if there's anything else you want to address. I know Commissioner Blackwelder has sixteen, I think, motions that she wants to make, along with some discussion, along with a few things that Commissioner Greengold has. Following that, we could move to Commissioner Blackwelder's list and, and deal with those as long as the night, as we stay here this evening, and continue at the next meeting if necessary.
Chairman Brown?
Commissioner Greengold.
Chris, the open space requirement, were you going to then wait on that, or what did you?
Oh, it's, that's.
We need to do that first, right? Isn't that the first thing we want to address? Okay, that's what I thought, okay. Before we get into Lori's.
Yeah, fine.
Okay.
Go ahead. While you're looking for that, the memo that will be the basis for our recommendation to town council, which Chris distributed by email, it's, the introduction to it has a chart of setbacks and other things, which does not match the zoning districts that we have established now, so that's one, one thing that will need to be looked at, but that's, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, so towards the end of the comprehensive plan writing process, the commission discussed adding an open space requirement for new residential developments, and not an open space like you need X number of square feet on the lot, but common open space, public open space, recreational space that would be created in new residential areas. And we actually had discussed, at least I proposed.
So we are, we are talking about this sheet of paper that you distributed, okay? So you should all have this to look at.
Oh. My God, yeah, so the section that I identified for an amendment was section two ninety nineteen N, and there is an open space requirement section already, so what, what I've done here was to draft language that adds to that, and that's shown in all caps, and then I added, added a number three after the first two points, and then this is the real meat of the, the standard, a minimum of one thousand square feet of common open space shall be provided, and no less than seventy-five percent of that open space shall be improved as recreational area. Which is to say, any new residential development, townhouse, community, or otherwise, would create common open space on the property as recreational space.
Are you proposing this in addition to percentage of open space required?
Yeah, so that percentage standard applies to on lot.
Okay.
Your backyard, essentially, your side yards. This is the common open space. This is the standard that gets us to creating little pocket parks and other open spaces if new development takes place.
In addition to adding open space in our, in our tables? Right, we want to increase open space, correct?
Increase in size or increase?
Well, we want to increase in general. We want to, we want to bring ourselves up to the standards of open space that are present now. Right now, we have like thirty-five percent is, is a pretty common standard. Right now, we're at fifteen percent in a lot of places, thirty percent even in the medium density.
That's not, that's not open space, that's private property.
Or, but it's still open space.
It's open, but it's not common property, which is what we're talking about here, space that everyone can use, as opposed to private property, which is the setbacks that.
Yes.
So, so an example of this would be if someone wanted to build townhouses on the former Stinnet's restaurant site, they would have to provide some amount of, call it park space, for the community, common community use. That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
And so I guess my, my comment on, on the draft here is I, instead of all new, I'm not sure what the word new would mean, I'd maybe change that to future residential developments.
Right.
And I'm not, and number three, a minimum of one thousand square feet shall be provided, no less, one thousand square feet for a townhouse, for two townhouses, or for eighteen townhouses, or?
It's, it's one thousand square feet per dwelling unit, per housing unit, created.
Per housing unit, okay.
That's a big difference. So we need to include that, Chris, in the writing here. Per, provided per housing unit. That makes a little more sense. Okay. And no less than seventy-five percent.
And that is not eliminating any of the open space that's required in the setback table, correct?
That's the private, yeah, that's the private.
That standard just means that once you build your house and your shed and swimming pool, there's a green space still left on your lot, equal to whatever the percentage is, thirteen, fifteen, forty-five, where the kids may be.
Right, it's not very much, so I don't know how we're, I mean, it's going to take a lot of, a lot of dwelling units to get a pocket park.
Well, my, the lot my house is on is thirty-three hundred square feet, so if you had three, three townhouses, they essentially get the size of my lot as a common area or park area. Thousand square feet isn't very much unless you're building twenty townhouses, and then you've got twenty thousand square feet.
Right, half an acre. As long as they can retain the amount of open space, period, on the lot, because if that's all that was there, if it was just building and that open space, it really wouldn't be very much.
There's a distinction here, this is common open area, that is just.
Versus, okay, I was, I'm, I'm just making sure. I would like to bring our open space standards up to the standards of today, though. That's part of our comprehensive goals.
I'd, I'd agree that in most cases, the percent open space on these lots, level is small, and if houses took up the entire, all, seventy percent of the typical single-family lot, the community would look a lot different. You wouldn't have the trees and the forest going through the center of town, you wouldn't have open space to accommodate store and management. On smaller lots, non-conforming lots, though, it's impossible to, to achieve that level of open space, but that's why we have various procedures. But, yeah, I agree, the, the percents for one space, on lot open space are small.
Or anybody that wants to get that done now, I'm not going to be here in June to help out with that.
Who, who will own this open space?
Uh, almost entirely, it would be HOA type of open space. It's possible that it can be dedicated to the municipality, if the town wanted to take over a certain small pocket park, but.
But we're, the town is requiring them to have this open park. So, I mean, the only property I can think of, other than that section that's relatively undeveloped, along two sixty, is this Stinnet's Place property, which I know is discussed, so, so if they build, I don't know, but, the, they will have to form an HOA. Does Seagate next to it have an HOA?
Yes, Seagate, yeah, of course, they have open, and they do have open space along the shoreline, tennis courts and other amenities.
They don't have tennis courts.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking if Seagate does not, but they do have an HOA, they have the HOA representatives that we work with. Well, I don't know that it's owned by the HOA, but it's owned by the developer still, or it's development entity, as we call it, and, but everything else we said is right, the, it's, it's, the terms of its preservation are set forth in agreement, and the town is a party to that agreement, and is eligible under that agreement to take ownership of it. But it has not taken place, as far as I know. But, but that's, that's on a scale, and that's entirely different, and the whole reason that was created is not like that. And this, believe me, everyone should know that this standard is not about removing or eliminating the deficiency that we have identified in town park space. Now, that's a different, that's a policy decision about buying land and developing parks. This is about ensuring that future developments create local spaces for the residents that are being constructed, so it's not, and by virtue of that, it's going to reduce the number of lots, because at least one of those open spaces probably going to be where a lot would be. But it's, the intent is to create open space, pocket parks, that support developments. And if you had another subdivision in the town, with this standard, you'd have more open space, more parkland than you have under current standards.
Chairman Brown, a couple of things.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wonder if we want to add several things, one thing being some acknowledgement that the entity that is providing this will be supporting it. So in other words, they have to set up some kind of an HOA, and they have to have it distributed between the, so we need to have some, something in there that, that indicates that the town will not be, for the maintenance, yeah, exactly, the maintenance of it. So we need to have that kind of language, and I also would like language in there indicating that they can't give monies in lieu of doing this open space. There is no ability to get out of this requirement. I don't want to see, you know, money's going down to some other county, so that we can avoid having open space here. So I think those two things we need to have in this. And the other question I have is, I know you're writing, I'll let you keep thinking.
It's okay, I, I got it.
You can write and think at the same, I can't do that. And then the other thing is, I know Chairman Brown offered the idea of future residential, do we want to indicate future redevelopment and infill? Do we want to delineate it even that far, as far as going infill, or, you know, describing it more precisely than just future residential? Because I'm concerned that that, well, I've already had a, you know, I had a little cottage here, and I raised it, and then, you know, it's not really a, it's kind of a, just a redo. I just, you know, I, I just wonder if we are going to have people getting out of this requirement by saying, oh, it's just a redo, because I left a wall or something. They do that in California all the time, so I know how they get around these things.
Well, it depends on the definition of residential developments.
There, there you go.
If you're renovating a single house, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call that a residential development.
Okay, what are we talking about then? Are we talking about more than one residential unit then?
I'm going to, a, anything that would trigger a site plan for the planning commission review. So if it's a single-family house, no, but if it's a, a multi-family dwelling, building, yes.
A duplex, a duplex would require that.
No, I don't think so.
Can we put a number on it?
On this, because it's vague.
So you're saying that this will count as our community park space, even though in some cases it's going to be two thousand square feet, because there's only two residents, or what, I mean, not a duplex, a duplex wouldn't have this requirement?
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know that it would make sense to have it.
Right.
Created for duplexes.
I would say more than two, I would say more than two family units, that's how I would look at that, because once you get into the triplex, then you have needs for little families to have places to run and play, and it's not in the driveway.
And this is why the conditions would have helped, because it would allow us to, I said, this is why having multi-unit conditional would have helped, because it would have allowed us to require that in a more subjective way that would accommodate the site.
Perhaps we need to go back to that, Ms. Blackwelder.
You know, one, once you get past a single-family house, you have more complications, and to accommodate people properly.
She's referring to our, our chart, remember, the codes that we kind of passed through last time? We were, yeah, that's an interesting point, is that if we go back to this and go back to where it says multi-family, it's on number three and four, you've got three and four, we should have that condition, make it a C, if we're going to put this, this kind of thing in, we have to make it a C, a condition, and we need to insert in there, in the code, that there is a number that relates to the code, the conditions. So right now, we have it permitted, but we're going to have to now go back and make it C for number three and number four.
This would apply to any residential development, so if it's a new subdivision of single-family homes, that would require.
That's why I'm saying we need to change it, make it C, conditional, right?
And there's, there's a couple other conditions that would be appropriate for multi-unit. It's, I think me and Cindy, we voted for it, right, so we can.
We had, yeah, we did talk about it last time, and I think we did have a motion, but now that we're bringing this to light, we need to revisit it again, because I think we did bring that up last time, three and four, that we wanted conditional, but I don't think we had specifics about the conditions necessarily, but now that we're talking about it, we've got conditions, so now we have to go back and revisit it, it looks like.
Right.
Do you see what I'm saying, number three and four?
Do you all want to revisit it and make a motion to revisit it, because you voted against C?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear what Chris has, just a.
Fairly discreet, it's, it's an open space requirement. Fairly discreet, it's, um, it's an open space requirement. If passed, any residential development will trigger a need for open space, and as a planning commission, you review the site plan to determine where it's best located and how it's allocated in the benefit of the whole project. Again, this is, this gets us, gets a, gets this thing accomplished. There are a lot of interesting conditions relative to multifamily projects, but I'd love for you to see that in the context of real plans, the evaluation of of conditions, what setbacks are relevant, how they're relevant to a certain location within the town of Chesapeake Beach, and just really spend time with it. I think they're all important, but I think they deserve a real deep dive into the the standards.
Right, Chris, I think you told Cindy that you would get us close, um, with some design standards for multi-unit, you said that when we approved the comp plan. Um, we really need those before we lift this moratorium, so one way or another, uh, we need either the conditional with the floating zone that gives us a little bit of leeway to make sure that the site plans we get are good. Or we need you to spend a little bit more time with the code and give us something, something more robust that we can work with, because we're not going to be able to reject a site plan based on things that we don't have in our code.
Need coherent guidance from this planning commission. I do feel some pressure to move this forward for purposes legitimately, so the council can act quickly, okay? I have been advocating since my first day here on the job years ago for updating and creating these types of standards. I'm so happy we have a planning commission that's open and willing to do this, and a mayor and council that supports it. If we want to have some basic standards for compatibility, I'll write them and bring them back at the next meeting, but they will be broad brush and they'll be general. They're not going to be something that, um, they're not going to be ideal, but they will give you the discretion, the sort of the the evaluation authority, you'll be able to consider impacts, and in the same way, ironically, it would be like those types of standards that are now in the code under the bonus density overlay. In other words, the bonus density overlay was discretionary on the on the basis of establishing findings. If the planning commission found certain findings of fact relative to compatibility, scale, massing, then it could grant. So it's going to be something like that, okay? What I, hopefully, we can get to with the commission is really coherent design standards, and that's why I suggested spending time to do a real evaluation, architectural design standards from standpoint for the town, and then come out with detailed standards. But, um, since we're not going to get this done tonight, and we're going to come back in June and then probably hold a public hearing, worst case scenario, in in July, perhaps August, um, I I have time to write another, you know, set of compatibility type of standards.
Are the compatibility standards, the design standards, part of the immediate term text amendments that need to be sent to the town council to lift the moratorium?
No, I, it's, see, there, there's the point, I, I, I I'm operating on the direction that the the commission itself has established, and, uh, so Lori, you're raising points, Cindy, you've made a good point too, um, but it's, it takes the majority of the commission to to decide what you want to do. I can do it, I have to, I have the time, um, but if it sets a whole new line of of work and requires additional meetings, what it does is set back all these other priorities that have to be, have to be sent to the council in the near term.
Design standards take a year. And that's, that's why, that's why, you know, we tried to pull from code that we already have, and there's some St. Michael's code in the in the packet. That code is for a floating zone, and what that means is if we were to make multi-unit conditional, and we linked it to a floating zone, that multi-unit is not mapped until we agree to the standards, and we have, you know, I've given you everybody the example that's in St. Michael's. Um, and that would be easy, because it's right in front of, it's right in front of us. Like I said, it requires a C, it requires that floating zone to take the place of the bonus density overlay, and then we have some ability to influence and and you know, demand a good product for our town, which we should be doing.
The only question getting to a good product for the town, the question is whether, what is necessary for the immediate term text.
Why is that the question, Larry?
That that need to be, need to respond to the comprehensive plan so the town council can move on. We can, we're, our, we will continue working, we will be here, uh, and we won't, whatever we propose will not be the last word in zoning amendments, we'll so I, I would suggest that we focus on what is necessary to send to the town council. I'd also suggest that if we sent them an entire new zoning code, that the town council would take a long time to consider that, as opposed to sending them something that they can digest and understand and deal with, uh, near term.
So Chairman Brown, the 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 task here isn't to get the code done, the task here is to make sure that Chesapeake Beach develops in a way that is appropriate and and appreciated by residents, it's not to just get amendments to the town council.
We said in our comprehensive plan, and what the town council approved in the comprehensive plan, that we would send them immediate term text amendments necessary, uh, in the short term.
Necessary to implement the comprehensive plan.
Well, you, we have different views.
Uh, right.
Okay, so I'm telling you what my view is, I've, I've heard your view several times.
I just, I probably share my view more than I should. These immediate items, these eight items or so, specifically related to the reason why the moratorium is in place. Without them, the planning commission does not have the authority to engage in any meaningful way with the development plans that are sitting on my desk, waiting to come to you. When they come to you, if these things are not done, you're going to have tools that are not suited to your job, okay? These changes are directly, they are, they are the implementing ordinances that the town council asked for in order to lift the moratorium. And the moratorium cannot stay on forever. And Mr. Brown mentioned the letter, that's the letter that is going to be sent out to you. We have to act, we have to get these priority issues in front of the, we did the comprehensive plan, we have to get them to the council, so they can decide to to limit building height or eliminate multifamily from the commercial zones and do all these other things, because we don't, we have to administer the code as it exists today, and you will have a site plan for multifamily commercial developments in the maritime zone, okay?
Right, but we don't have to do that until we lift the moratorium. And so when we lift the moratorium, we aren't limited to only having the code in the comprehensive plan. We can, if we could get the code in front of us, we can implement better code and lift the moratorium, and then we can operate under better code. And we've looked at the same lines of very skeletal code over and over again, and we don't have better code, and what's going to happen is, we're going to lift the moratorium, and we're not going to have better code, and we could have gotten better code all along, but we haven't. And so there's no reason why we shouldn't try to get better codes so we can get better projects.
Okay, well, uh, we've gone around this buoy a couple times, it is nine PM.
Chairman Brown.
I've said that I will make a motion to adjourn at nine PM. Is there a second? Oh, it's a second, uh, good, thank you. Is there, uh, any discussion?
I would like to to say that I think we have a lot more work to do, so I'm ready to go as long as we can tonight. Uh, that's my opinion about this, so we need to keep going.
Blackwelder?
I would like to comment that I will not be in the June meeting. And also, I think that August would be a more appropriate time to talk about, uh, a public hearing, um, this.
We need to vote, we need to vote, Lori, we need to vote on that.
On what?
To adjourn the meeting or not.
Oh, uh, I'd like to go fifteen more minutes.
I'd like to continue to meet.
It's real good.
Oh, my gosh, we're going to talk fast.
Let's get some more done here.
All right.
Chairman Brown, can I make a suggestion? Maybe if we all came up with like three or four ideas that Chris can run with, that we can try and accomplish. It just seems like we're overwhelmed with so many things going on. Um, I know that, Chris, you've got, how many amendment, we've got, now, we've got the one that you're going to continue to finish, the one on the open space. That one, we're going to for sure get done, so that's done, okay? What are the other ones that we have to get done? There are the ones that you said.
Compendium of changes, the compilation of changes, and the zoning.
So it's this chart.
That chart, and a memo.
This memo, and the thirty-five foot, is that the third one?
It's May twentieth memo.
May twentieth. Oh, the May twentieth memo is a memo from you to us, right?
It's May twentieth? The the memo that I mailed to everyone.
Yeah, the one that, uh, is on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes.
So this, the May twentieth memo outlines, uh, the decisions that Chris believes we have made. It's going to have to be converted as a memo from the commission or a resolution from the commission to the town council, but it will be essentially, this is the starting point. There are three other things that you believe are necessary to complete the immediate term text amendments that would have to be added to it. One of them is the open space common area. The other one is this, this one, and the third one is what, Chris?
The third thing is the tourist homes, but that's embodied in the table.
Okay, so that's in the table.
I have a question about the map.
Let me finish, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I appreciate you not interrupting.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that's, that's what we have to get done in order to get it to the town council. Um, so we've, we've looked at this, uh, the open space requirements, some changes have been made, suggested for that. Uh, are there any other changes for that?
For, I'm sorry.
The open space.
So did we get all those, Sharon, did you write all the ones that we were talking about, um, for that open space?
The open space was in response to a, a a text amendment listed in the implementation chapter, or no?
Yes.
Yes, so what I would like to do since, um.
Chris, if you could, if you could read to us what changes you have that we've discussed this evening, so we.
Okay, um, that number three of the open space, well, first, number one of the open space would be amended to say all future residential rather than all new. That item number three would say a minimum of one thousand square feet per housing unit. Number four would say something to the effect that common open space shall be owned and maintained by the homeowners association or other entity established by the developer to maintain the property, I have the, I have the standard language that works there. And number five would say, uh, the payment of fee in lieu of providing the physical open space is strictly prohibited.
Say that one again, please.
The payment, the payment of fees in lieu of providing the physical open space required by this section is prohibited. Also add here, let's say, future residential greater than two family units, didn't we say that too?
We did.
I thought we talked about making them conditional.
That's where things, we did never, this is where things.
That's where we're at, so.
Right.
What, what does the commission want to do? We want to say two units, or we want to say conditional? I'm not sure either. So, but how about if Commissioner Blackwelder explained to us what you mean by condition?
As I described, um, I have, I, I pass out a handout for you guys. Take a look at that handout.
Handout's twenty pages long.
It's, oh, it's, it's a graphic. Um, I need to find my handout, we have so much stuff. Do you all have the PowerPoint handout with the graphic, this one, that one, yeah?
Yes.
So if we don't make, um, multi-unit conditional and let it float, your front page shows you how many, uh, houses can go in that little space on Cox Road, and it's as many households as are in Chesapeake Village, according to the density as it sits today. Um, making, making multi-unit housing conditional and making it float will not only allow us to, um, have more discretion over the open space and the site plan and and the the design aesthetics of the multi-unit property, but it will also prevent um, every parcel becoming over-intensified, because it it will float, which means it's not mapped. Um, so I, I, I think that we are in a hurry, we, we, we're always, you know, it's, it's been very confusing, it's, it's been, that, that's just the way that this has been run the whole way. If we could get at least that protection, it would be very helpful, that, in addition to, um, bringing our standards up to the, the, you know, the acceptable standards today of open space by making every residential area have a requirement of thirty-five percent open space.
Public open space?
Just open space on lot, and then Chris has his amendment, um, that's also in the handout.
Open, open space per lot or or community space?
So, open space is a setback.
Because you keep going back and forth.
Right, you confuse me a lot with non-conforming use, so I guess we're even. I mean, I, I'm sure, Chairman Brown, you're familiar with the setbacks, so I'm talking about the open space required in the setbacks. And so this, the standards are.
That's in the chart that Chris has distributed.
Yes, it's in his memo, so, okay, the section of the code would be.
That's, that's dealing with the setbacks, so we, we can deal with the setbacks. And then the common area, the open, uh, space requirements for the common area are different?
Yes.
Got that?
Yes. So if we could at least get that done, get ourselves up to the open space standards, um, that would be helpful tonight. So.
And the question is whether it's this And the question is whether it's this or...
Well, no.
Two houses per, the two house, two residential unit.
No, it's not either or. They're two separate things. They're two separate things. So we're deficient in open space on lot. And Chris's suggestion is consolidate open space, so... On lot, right. So his open space is part of our open space, like, or part of the on-lot open space. It just requires it to be consolidated. But we're deficient on open space on lot as well in our residential neighborhoods, and I'd like to bring us up to standard at 35%.
Yeah, that's the setback issue. But talking about the open space requirements, which is a different issue.
Right, but I'd like to get this done. You want to get something done. I would like to make a motion to make the open space requirement in all residential areas 35%.
Question on new development.
I mean, future?
Right, yeah, you can't make somebody unbuild their house.
No, but they could take those sheds down.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about it because we're all over the map here.
Okay. So, did you finish with your question then about?
I did.
Okay, so your motion, again, Lori, was to make the common open space...
No.
No, the, I'm sorry, rephrase the motion.
My motion is to make the open space requirement for all residential districts...
So not the common open, okay.
In 290, 19A.
19A.
35%.
Okay, this would be just...
This is for individual residences or...
The open space. This is open space in district.
So it's not the common open space? We're getting confused on common open space.
Well, if somebody has a 3,300-square-foot lot, which is probably most of the lots in Chesapeake Beach.
Many of the ones in the traditional part of town.
Traditional part of town.
Not all.
35% of that would be roughly 1,100 square feet. So one-third of their lot has to be left open, and they have to meet the setback requirement of eight feet on either side and 20 feet on each end. So you're...
But right now, in medium density, it's 30%.
Can I finish?
Of course.
So you've, so if this applies to redevelopment of a home in the traditional areas of Chesapeake Beach, the 35% really restricts, I mean, it reduces the current size of the homes, I would suspect, in every case.
No, they would have, they're, right now, in the medium-density district, the open space requirement is 30%. Now, when Chris put us tables, gave us his tables, some of those percentages changed.
Where is that table?
35% is what is commonly recommended now for lots. It's not unusual. I'm not talking about anything unusual. And as you know, we could not tell somebody that they couldn't build back anything that wasn't the equivalent size of their current house. So we made it our goal to increase open space. I don't know why we wouldn't do that. I don't know why we wouldn't bring our code up to the standard that is being recommended today.
We've gone back to the setback requirement and gotten off the issue that we started at.
No, it's the same issue.
Can't we finish one before we go to the other?
Well, no.
You keep going back to this one, which is the setback requirements on individual lot.
A lot of motion on the table, so I have to go back.
And what we're talking about is open space requirements that are for...
Right, immediate-term text amendments regarding open space.
Right.
Right, so Chris had his...
Which is not the setback requirements in this chart.
Sure. I understand, I have a motion on the table. Chris did propose that we consolidate some land. But the text amendments had to do with open space, and so...
I just have to interrupt. I don't know where Chris proposed consolidating land.
Consolidating open space within a lot. That's what his amendment is about.
No, no, it's not consolidating anything. It's a new requirement. For new residential developments, they would have to build their houses on their own lots with their own little backyards, plus create a common open area on the site. So there's no consolidation at all. It's just separate open space. Internal to it, if you can imagine a small townhouse development, in the future, you'd have their house and your own little backyard, and all in fee simple, owned by the individual. And then the community would have a mini park or pocket park, or something bigger, as the development got bigger.
Sure, but it's coming from their open space. Is that correct?
It is, no, no.
It's so...
It's a new requirement.
All right, so if the RV, 15% is not enough for the RV, by any stretch. That is hardly any open space.
That's not what we're talking about.
Right, I understand, Larry, but they're related because it seems like this is a lot of open space, and this is this great thing. But it would take 43 units just to get an acre under Chris's code. And 15%... Of communal, so Chris's code.
What's confusing is that your 35% has nothing to do with communal open space. It is, you're addressing having more property unbuilt upon on upcoming lots. 35% is what you're suggesting.
35% is what is standard and recommended in the planning community today. 15% isn't very much at all.
I don't know where you got that, but...
I got it right here, from the open space model from the Maryland Department of Planning.
Well, we've already resolved the open common space, correct? That we're...
Correct.
All right, so let's stop talking about that.
Right, no, it is, definitely.
Space is an open space.
Definitely.
Well, what we didn't finish was your question, more than two units, housing units? Remember, you asked, do we want to include with all-new residential? All-new, you know, do you want to indicate it's two or more?
Well, somebody did, I simply wrote it down.
Well, I guess I did. But anyway, so, but anyway, I'm thinking we need to include a, you know, we don't want to have it for every single lot, and probably not for a duplex, but for a triplex or more? Yes, I would say yes to this.
I would generally say for something more than three. Because a triplex is actually a conversion of a single-family home into multiple units, and it requires a larger lot size anyway, and it's sort of on its own lot. But when you start something more than that, then you become more of a, it becomes bigger. I mean, it becomes, it's harder to accommodate. It's hard to throw the ball in the backyard, for instance. When you're talking about four or five or so, the lots get smaller and more houses are built.
Well, if that is your case, then Lori's point is very well taken, that then you need to go to make sure that there's 30 to 35% of their own lot that is open and, you know, open space.
But they have to do that anyway.
Yeah, you have to do that.
Well, no.
15%.
Not, only in certain zones.
Certain zones, yes.
Yeah, if you look on the...
It's changes across the zones. But listen, as I said earlier on, I think increasing that percent is a good idea, but there are a couple of caveats. And we have to be really thoughtful about how we do this because for some people who have small, non-conforming lots, that will be extremely difficult to accommodate. And Larry talked about a 3,300-square-foot lot, but there are 2,000 square foot lots.
We have a 25.
Right, so it'd be very hard to do that. And, but for the standard lot, the lot that meets the minimum requirements in every zone, these standards would allow too much intense building if someone chose to build to that. And you might think, well, no one would ever build a house that big, but they do.
Well, they do, absolutely do.
So what you would do, if you can imagine, when you look at a lot in plan view, meaning on a piece of paper, you draw the lot lines, and then you draw the side yard setback lines, eight feet from each side. The front setback line, 15 from the front, and the rear, 20 feet from the back lot line. And then you've got a little box. Now, take that box and extrude it up 35 foot tall. That's your buildable envelope. Under our code, you could fill up that entire space with buildings. Except, and then you think, well, are you at 15% or not? Well, you might actually have 15% just wrapped around that perimeter of green space or a yard. And you think, well, that would never happen, but it will happen, and it does happen. And it's important to tweak that. But we have to do it in a way that addresses lots of variety of sizes. We have to think about, well, how does this standard, how would 35 apply to a 2,000-square-foot lot? Or a non-conforming lot? Or do we simply say for non-conforming lots, you can maintain the standard of 15%? You know, something like that? Or does it require addition review? You have to have an answer for the person who wants to take down their little house and build a little bit bigger, or build an addition for the larger family, and they can't now because they have to meet a 35-foot open space.
I think that's particularly important in this community because there are so many of these small lots.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's why I think it's something that requires some dialogue, community engagement.
Meniscule.
Sure, so that's, believe me, I've been trying to find solutions for three years to having good code but not infringing on people. And it's proven to be very, very difficult. Again, conditional and the multi-unit section will solve most of these problems.
And go back to your motion again. Go back to your motion again.
Additionally, the Board of Appeals can handle this situation, as we've said many, many times. And the Board of Appeals is very robust these days. I'm sure they can take it on.
So your motion again is...
My motion is to, God, glasses. In... In Section 290, 19A, Tables Requirements Exceptions, make the open space requirement in all residential districts 35%.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, second. Is there any other discussion? I would point out that we need to adjust those districts to the districts that we are.
Right, we would need to do that, right?
Anyway.
To your point, Chris, you're saying 35% is way too much? And that, how do we gain flexibility? Oh, yeah, it would be too much in cases of very small lots, non-conforming lots. Well, I'm not prepared to tell you the best way. There are a variety of ways you can do it. If you have time, we can talk through it.
And we just make it conditional on multifamily units? And then modify it as the site plan comes before us? So in other words, if we have a code, we can always reduce the amount that if we think it needs to be, right?
And the Board of Appeals can also reduce the amount.
I mean, if we have conditions, or if, you know, once we get to the multi, you know how we've got multifamily housing on our... Here, we put condition. And we can put it for townhouse dwelling and multifamily dwelling. Three and four, we can put Cs. And then we can, we can go with Lori's, well, I mean, it's a suggestion. We could, you know, pass that motion and then modify it depending on the particular lot. And if it's conditional, then we'll all see that to the site plan.
Why even make it conditional? Why just make it a requirement?
Because you brought up the point that lots are, you know, different shape, sizes, and it might require us to change the amount, according to the, that's your suggestion, I think.
Right, but if you don't make it a requirement, if you don't fix a number, then what is the Board of Appeals going to give a variance to?
Okay, the setback. The Board of Appeals can give, or the open space. The Board of Appeals can...
No, I'm saying they need a standard.
Right, to measure against.
To make exceptions of, that's right.
Yeah.
Which is 35%.
That's right.
I, I will vote. When you're ready.
I would just say that it would be better for the code and the way it's applied to address this issue by mending the table itself and not adding a condition on that. Because then you've got, it's just an added layer of complexity that I don't think actually benefits. And it requires, I think, a lot more kind of coordination with the community at large. But making it changed in the tables, changing, you know, 40 to 35, 30 to 35, and 15 to 35, that's simply a text amendment that can be changed here and now. I do think that there's a burden that imposes to smaller lots. And you might say that, well, you can go to the Board of Appeals, but you have to prove that you meet certain standards, and there's a cost to go to the Board of Appeals, and it delays your project. So it does impose a bit of a burden on folks that have smaller lots. I'd prefer to deal with this by adding additional language to address the smaller lots. But if time is of the essence, I can bring that back to you in the next round of things, maybe later in the summer when we're doing other things. But if you're dead set on changing it, I would simply say do it directly, change it to the table, and not step into this whole conditional versus permitted type of use by zone. Just change it.
Thank you for that advice, Chris. I made the motion. Jan seconded, Cindy voted.
Okay, well, I just, just looking at what I see for a small lot, I'll use mine as an example. 3,300-square-foot lot. You have to have a setback of 20 feet. Now, the lots are 30 feet wide, so a 20-foot setback is going to be 600 square feet. Okay? And then you need eight feet on either side. So my lot's 110 feet long. So that means it's got eight times 110, is 880 on each side. So you're up to 1,700 square feet, plus the 600 setback on one end. We haven't gotten to the other end yet. So that's 2,300 square feet. And then you've got 35%, another 1,000 you knock off of that. You end up with a house that's 10 by 10, maybe a garage.
Larry, your setbacks are included in the open space. You don't have to subtract your setbacks.
Okay, so you're down to 2,700 square feet. I just, I don't...
Do you disagree with the Maryland Department of Planning?
Yes, I do. I mean, Maryland Department of Planning is looking at Maryland in general.
Sure.
Okay? Whereas Chesapeake Beach was put in place with our lots, small lots, established long before the Maryland Department of Planning ever came into some thought process. So I would, they're giving a general guideline that looks good for the entire state of Maryland. We, I want to deal with Chesapeake Beach, which has existing lots.
Sure, and we have that throughout Chesapeake Beach.
That's right.
Right.
Yes, we do.
We certainly do. And we have, like Chris said, he can write some language.
But he's suggesting that we change the table.
Yes.
Have a separate amendment.
Yes.
That later we can do something, so should...
I'm fine with that. Yes, I think we should get that done. Larry keeps interrupting.
My preference, my preference would be to write this standards and all that now. But short of that, change the table, and we can pick this up later.
Okay, so we have a, we do have a motion for 35%. So we have a, we do have a motion for thirty-five percent across the board. Have a second?
I seconded it.
Any further discussion?
Is that necessary? If we're changing the table, are we voting on changing the table?
Yes.
Yes, voting on changing the table, yes.
Yeah, we're voting on changing.
Only the table right now.
I'm in. Thank you very much.
Okay. The percent open space in residential low density is forty percent. Are you suggesting reducing that to thirty-five? And you want to keep that at forty?
We can, somebody could amend it to say, except residential low density, which should remain at forty percent. If they wanted.
I, you could also change your motion to include that. You want to just make it simple and make.
Sure.
And amend your motion?
So I'm, I'm reading my amended motion right now. Amended motion says to amend Section 290, 19A, to make the open space requirement thirty-five percent in all residential districts except for the residential low-density district, which will have a requirement of forty percent.
I'll second that to keep moving along here.
Okay. Need further discussion? All in favor of this amendment to the table?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. We've gone fifteen minutes over the fifteen minutes.
I will second that.
All right.
I will always second that.
Any discussion?
We do have a concern, if we do decide to end this meeting, that we do have a member who's not going to be here next month. Do we want to change the next date of the next meeting? Or do we want to keep it and just have four of us? Or how do we want to do next meeting?
Well, we will have a, oh, we will have a forum if Larry's.
We will, I just.
I'd rather change the meeting. I think, I think we're in discussion.
Yeah, it does, right?
I can't believe.
Today's the meeting, we will have to go through the town because they support us, so I can't, we can't just pick a date.
Right. What do we do?
What dates can't you?
Yeah, where are you going?
I will be in London.
Nice.
I hope my kids aren't watching because I would have spilled the beans. I doubt they're watching and planning in every meeting.
What date?
Eighteenth till the end of June.
So before the eighteenth. Hey, I will ask. I'll let you know.
Now, I'll obviously keep tabs if we can't do it and, and look at what is in the agenda and send recommendations. You guys can do what you want with them. On, if we can't change the meeting.
Is somebody willing to present those?
Larry's going to derail all of them, so I would like to wait.
Wow.
He's not opinionating.
Or shy.
But I would like everybody to read them, and, and I, I want to get to really good code for our town, and if Chris could work on that.
It's like, it's like you're saying the rest of us don't. I mean, come on.
Okay, but the, just the amendments that we're talking about aren't going to do it, so we need to do more. Anyways, we're adjourning, right?
So is someone willing to present Lori's motions?
Correct.
So we're not doing that, okay?
Well, if the, if the meeting can get changed, then she can present her own. Otherwise, that means we won't get to send something to the Town Council till August.
I just wanted to ask Chris about these amendments, Amendment Three and Four. Can we still modify them or adjust them as?
Of course we can. Of course. Yes, yes, we can, is the answer. We, we have to put together, from what Chris has got, we'll have to put together a resolution to the Town Council, which will incorporate those proposals.
Those, those have all gone through your deliberative process already and reflect the changes you made. But we do have to hold a public hearing. So you could change them before the public hearing, or you can send them out, these are good enough, and hear a public comment, then respond and make any changes. Either way.
Okay, so by the next meeting, we can. Now, did we need a motion also for the open space, the common open space?
Kind of hard to vote on it until we see it. So just, just so we understand the timeline, if we, once we have a public hearing, we may change things, which means we'll have to have a subsequent meeting to consider what the public has suggested, which means it's a month later for the Town Council. So we're talking a while. Chris, I had a couple of questions about the list, however. The amendment, we have the, Amendment Three and Four, I think, or Four and Five, all talk about the same thing. I mean, one of them says eliminate the bonus density area, and the other one says we'll modify it. Can't those just be combined in one? I have to find it to.
Yeah, Amendment Four says repeal. Oh, yeah. You know, I don't, you're right. Yeah, Number Four's, Number Five could cover it all because Five says remove all references. But when, when I presented this a while back, it was just, you know, a kind of a clerical change. There are going to be references throughout the document to that concept.
Right, so.
And the real meat of the change that I really wanted you to weigh in on was removing that particular section that creates your, created the bonus overlay.
Yeah, so anyway, it, obviously, the list will change. Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Excuse me?
I ask one more question. I'm sorry. I have a question about the map. I think we could probably get the map done very quickly tonight because I was going to make a motion to forward the map exactly as it is in the comprehensive plan.
Oh. We have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to adjourn. So if, the question is, you would like to continue the meeting to consider the map. Is that correct?
That would be a no to adjourn.
So.
If we do that, I need a vote.
So all in favor of adjourning, please say aye. All right, let's go. The map.
Okay.
I don't even need five minutes. Whatever you need, okay. Can I ask you a question? On, I have a question, I guess, about, I know, to nineteen nineteen L two.
Okay, what's the question?
I was just wondering if, you know, because of this height situation, do we need to delete that? Or start over, or modify it, or how, how is that going to play into these amendments?
Yeah, that's one of the ones that are being proposed for elimination.
It's already decided.
Yeah, we decided that, and you. I'm just looking at our list of the. Yeah, it's on page three of six in this consolidated. Three, page three of six.
Three, so you're talking about Amendment Three?
Page three of six. So it's actually Amendment Number Two.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Since we're talking about that, where, when, when you build a home on a slope, where is the thirty-five foot?
It's measured from the front of the building, the door, the entrance, the finished grade.
But that was eliminated.
No, that wasn't, we eliminated.
It's by definition.
By, by two, well, Number Two was measured from the front door, but do we need to?
The, the definition of building height in the code, in the back of the code, is as I defined it.
Well, if the front of the house is on the higher part of the slope, then you get the advantage.
Back is exposed, and it could look even taller.
Okay, thank you. All right, so over to you.
So, we presented a map in the comprehensive plan. It's called Map Thirteen. It says Proposed Land Use Map 2040. I like it because it has the FIDS habitat documented on it. And I would like to propose that we forward this as the official land use map as part of the code.
I get that.
Chris?
The town has a zoning map. It's different from the land use map in the code. Two, two different things. The land use map is now part of the official policy of the town because the plan was adopted. But we do have a zoning map, which is part of the zoning ordinance. And it's distinctly different. Two, two different things.
So here, here's my, here's my, might take a second. Here's my problem. I, I've only dealt with one map when we've been looking at site plans and stuff. I haven't seen a land use map and a zoning map ever. Only had one map. My concern is, is that we are rezoning at RPC. We know this developer is going to take the town to court and try to keep his property. And right now, his property is a FIDS habitat. So we need to zone it a FIDS habitat so he doesn't send the town down all kinds of legal roads costing them money. It's a FIDS habitat. So I just want it part of the map, and, and we could even make it a district, FIDS habitat. But the easy way to do this is just to make the zoning map, the land use map.
It's not the easy way. It's not the right way. It's.
Well, how do we, how do we make sure that that parcel, that we don't pay extra for that parcel, that we don't lose that parcel to development? That, that would be such an error.
That parcel is, you're talking about that two-hundred acre deed restricted parcel.
Yes, and I, I, there's been all kinds of weird stuff surrounding that parcel.
But everybody on the Planning Commission's got a copy of the deed of covenant that restricts any use and protects it in perpetuity, right? Everybody has that.
That's Chris.
I think it's, I think it's an appendix now to the comprehensive.
So what is there not to understand? It's, it's protected.
Chris, I understand, but, but we've visited a site plan, and that was never mentioned. You brought a site plan to us that was never mentioned. I didn't even really look at the comprehensive plan until we started talking about it. This information gets lost. It's been lost. We need it on a map.
Can you tell us what site plan it was that you're referring?
It was to move. It was to allow grinder, some kind of, it was allowed to individual grinder pumps as opposed to a pump station for townhouses, which I will never do again because I just replaced mine, and it was three thousand dollars.
That's, how is that relevant to this two-hundred acre property?
What I'm saying, Chris, is it doesn't hurt to have it on a map. It only helps, and so let's put it on a map.
Okay, so the, the site plan argument is not.
The site plan argument is that this information can easily get lost, and we don't want to get in a situation where.
But there was never a site plan that intruded into this two-hundred acre property.
There was a site plan that, yes, that abutted this two-hundred acre parcel.
Abutting is not intruding.
Well, the growth allocation, which was passed, the property that we discussed was actually drawn up close to the property on this particular site plan.
Close to the property.
Larry, it's irrelevant. All I want to do is put a bird on the map and call it a FIDS habitat.
No, I, I get it, but your, the, your beginning of your argument was that we considered a site plan that intruded into the property. I'm just trying to clarify.
So what I'm saying is, is that, that was relevant information that we didn't have, and I don't want to visit a property or a site plan.
Since it didn't intrude into that property, why was it relevant?
It was relevant because the growth allocation was drawn differently than it was.
It has no significance. It has no regulatory significance. The land use plan has the bird, has the FIDS habitat. It's meant to have that designation. The, the zoning map is a specific legal document, and it's drawn, by and large, to match all property lines. And it doesn't have extraneous kind of topographic information. It's simply a zoning document. Lori, I, I think you've, you're, you're, I, I think your concern is not going to be changed. I mean, I just, I just don't see this as relevant. We, this, this property is protected by a deed of covenant. And you might want to, but, but now you know, and the, the comprehensive plan shows it.
Chris, this board rotates, there's been seventeen people on this board since 2018 when we started this comprehensive.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
Not seventeen people.
Maybe I count, maybe.
You miscounted.
I probably did count. There's been at least twelve.
But it doesn't change the fact that the zoning ordinance requires a zoning map. Maryland State Law requires a zoning map, and that.
Chris.
And that the, and that the two are not the same. They're distinct and different.
Why have we been working from one?
We haven't been working. We've always worked on the comprehensive plan. There's always been a zoning map separate.
Right.
This is where the rubber hits the road. It's the law. And what we're trying to do in this, this series of meetings is to have the Planning Commission hold a public hearing so we can get a new zoning map adopted.
Okay, well, we need to revisit this because we, we eliminated. Okay, well, we need to revisit this because we, we eliminated the RPC. We eliminated that from the zoning map. It's no longer an RPC. And now we're saying that the resource conservation area has one home per five acres is what, right now, we're talking about in the densities unless we change it.
We eliminated RPC?
Yes, the residential plan community was...
We eliminated some residential plan community from the map?
Yes, we did.
No, you didn't.
News. News, breaking news.
It's resource conservation now by the zone.
Commissioners, you have a zoning map and it shows RPC. The recommended zoning map still shows RPC. However, in response to Lori's comments, we actually added a new category encompassing all the open space around the developed parts and called that resource conservation. The RPC continues. It's on the, it's only recommended.
Oh, okay. All right, that wasn't my mistake. I did not, but where does it say RPC on this zoning map? It's only says it on Bayview Hills. It doesn't say it in the resource conservation area. So now that resource conservation area would fall under the resource conservation area zoning rules, which says five homes per acre.
Okay, so we...
I would suggest that this discussion maybe can go on separately without holding the whole commission here.
Sure.
So...
Town attorney definitely needs to weigh in on what we do with that.
All in favor of adjourning? Please say aye.
Yes, sir.
One?
Adjourn.
Two?
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Three, four. Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, hit the gavel. That makes it officious.
That's right. You got a farce, baby.
I don't know that I can, so I won't comment.